This regular meeting of the current Lake City Council is called the order. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Fighting.
I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda. I would entertain a motion for its approval. So moved. Motion's been made seconded to approve the city council regular agenda discussion.
Mayor, we do have one thing to add on the public works.
Okay.
Which would be a resolution for an improvement hearing for Little Spring staff.
So without objection, motion is seconded. Is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which he met the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. So moved. Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 14th, 2023 are before the council. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to correct anything on the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November meeting. So moved. Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 14th, 2023. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. At this time, we'll adjourn the regular meeting and call the order of public hearing to give consideration to the granting of a 3.2 wine and Sunday liquor license to Pizza Ranch D L LLC for the year January 1st to December 31st, 2004. City staff, any report to give on that or?
Mayor, council, we're required to have a public hearing anytime we issue a new liquor license to a new licensee. In this case, we have an application for a 3-2 beer license, wine license, and Sunday liquor license. With the 3-2 beer license and wine license, they would also be able to serve a strong beer. With that, there's really nothing else to add.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the city issuing that license to the Pizza Ranch D L LLC? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. Aaron?
Yeah, we all talked about it on the historic committee and we all agreed on granting the licenses on this. So I motion a move.
The second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the issuance of the 3.2 wine and Sunday liquor license to Pizza Ranch D L LLC for the entire year of 2024. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. At this time, I'll call the order of public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed street and utility improvements for the 2024 West Downtown Street and Utility Improvement Project. Before I open it up for comments, I'll defer to the city engineer for introduction.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Per usual, we have a public hearing tonight for our improvement project. This is scheduled for next year. It's our West Downtown Street Utility Reconstruction Project. Again, we're required by state statute to hold a hearing. Anytime we're doing an improvement project, this is going to involve special assessments. We're also trying to provide some information to the impacted property owners, answer questions, gain some input. So I'll go through the existing conditions, proposed improvements, costs, assessments. We're at the schedule and there'll be an opportunity for questions and comments at the end. The scope of this project, again broadly includes some areas on the west side of the downtown. Frazee Street from Oak Grove to Washington Avenue, about a four block segment there. One block segment of Holm Street from Lake Avenue to Washington Avenue. Again, about a four block section of Front Street from Summit Avenue to Washington Avenue. And then one block on Lake from Front Street to State Street. And then a short segment of alley that comes off of Lake Avenue. As far as where we're at, this project's been on the capital urban plan for a number of years now, driven by deteriorating streets, utilities, things of that nature. This past summer, we did some preliminary work on the project, including the field survey, some preliminary design and layouts and things of that nature. Moving into this winter, we will be doing the final design and permitting and bidding later this spring, targeting construction into the summer of 2024. So existing conditions in the project need, from a sewer standpoint, this is common throughout this whole project. The conditions vary on a lot of these pieces of infrastructure. From a sewer standpoint, Frazee Street, Front Street, Lake Avenue, all have old clay tile pipe. We don't know the exact age, but certainly well over 70 years old. The exception is Holm Street. There's a 10-inch PVC pipe there that was done in the 80s that would be in good condition. Water is a little bit even more mixed. On Frazee Street from Oak Grove to Summit, and then from Lake to Washington, there's some old cast iron, smaller cast iron pipe that's well beyond its service life. It's also undersized. When you consider its connection to the water tower, we prefer to see that as a transmission line helping get water up to our distribution system. And then Summit to Lake is a 12-inch PVC pipe, which again would be in good condition. It's also not in the 80s. Going on with water main, Holm Street, Lake to Washington, again, we have a 12-inch PVC pipe that was good to put in in the 80s with the mall redevelopment project, so that's in good condition. Front Street, we have again some old small cast iron pipe that is old and well beyond its useful life. Front Street PVC, again along the mall is good, in the 80s. Lake Street, small old cast iron pipe. From a stormwater standpoint, not near as much in this area. We do have a couple blocks of DCP or metrified clay pipes, old clay pipe on Lake Avenue and Front Street, which is the eastern block of Front Street. That is very old. We certainly don't want to be bad around. The remaining areas are actually in pretty good condition, or we suspect they're in good condition. We'll probably leave as much of that alone as we can. We'll have to reorientate some inlets and things like that with intersections. We may have to add a couple inlets to meet some current hydraulic standards, but not a full-on replacement of all the storm sewer. Street, if you've drove the roads, this is pretty obvious. Most of them are in very poor condition, most notably that block of Holm Street. It hasn't even been making it through another spring. Front Street is pretty poor as well, but all the streets to some degree are in pretty tough shape. Sidewalks, it's a mixed bag. There's been areas that have been panel here and there replaced, but by and large, sidewalks are in pretty tough shape. Doesn't meet current PDA standards. A little tough to see this, I understand, but this is just to give everybody an idea of existing street widths, because we are going to narrow some of the streets. Frazee Street from Oak Grove to Lake is 36. And then Lake to Washington is 48. All of Holm Street is 48. Front Street's 46. Lake Avenue is 46. The takeaway, and I'm getting ahead of myself, is that we'll leave that 36-foot wide street, but the rest of them will be adjusted to a 44-foot wide street, which is more in line with our standard for parking on both sides in commercial areas. So proposed improvements, simply put, the sanitary sewer that is bad, I outlined some areas that are acceptable, but the old clay tile pipe and things of that nature will be replaced with PVC mains, new concrete, precast concrete manholes. Again, some of those mains have remained in place. Done some televising to confirm the condition of that stuff. Water main replacement, if we have old cast iron pipe in the ground, we'll replace that with a variety of different sizes depending where it's at, 6 to 12 inches. The existing PVC is going to remain in place. That was a topic of discussion at the staff level. And you have PVC pipe, which is generally considered to be pretty good. It was put in in the 80s, so you're kind of wrestling with, you know, is it good enough to make the, live out the life of the new street? We believe it is, so we'll leave that in place. New hydrants, new valves. Service laterals, generally speaking, we'll replace those service laterals from the mains, the sewer main or the water main, out to the curb stop or the cleanup location, which is usually near the edge of the property line or downtown area in the boulevard space. Replace those lines. There's again a mixed bag of lines that have been replaced over time, some have and some have. We're kind of sorting through that, but we'll verify the condition of all those replacements needed. We'll probably be approaching some of the downtown property owners that have buildings that are directly behind the sidewalk and try to coordinate with them in terms of if they want to replace their service lateral hallway into their building, now would be a good time. Otherwise, that could leave a short segment of pipe out underneath the sidewalk that fails and an awful lot of expense to put on and fix three feet of pipe rather than just break it inside the building. But that'll require more coordination with those properties. Storm sewer, like I said, we'll replace that whole VCP pipe on Lake and Front. Otherwise, it's just going to be sort of here and there in some of the intersections. Add some inlets to meet current end-up requirements that we have for stormwater collection and/or if we need to add some for super aging and drainage considerations. Street and sidewalk, pretty similar to what's there. We use it between a surface street and so that's called a street segment. Replace the sidewalks, generally speaking, on both sides of the street where there is sidewalk right now. We're not planning on really changing any of the configurations in terms of where there's sidewalk and where there isn't. Most of the time, it'll be a six-foot side, six-foot wide sidewalk. We will be doing a colored and textured concrete boulevard, similar to what we've done in other commercial areas in the downtown. One notable is that we are going to try to slide in a 10-foot sidewalk trail, call it what you'd like, on one side of Frazee Street from Minnesota to Washington. What that's aimed at is trying to close the gap from the trail that we have right now that comes down Frazee, stops at Washington. Get this a couple blocks further. Ultimately, what we're gunning for is to be able to connect that trail to the one that stops over on Holm Street by the Canadian Pacific Railroad. So we've got a few blocks to go and then we would have that trail network sort of connected really from the western extreme side of town to the eastern extreme side of town. So that's the thought process behind that. But again, those sidewalks on Frazee Street from Oak Grove to Summit, which is how it exists right now. There's some streetscaping element to some of this project, again, particularly in the downtown area. What does that consist of? Primarily boulevard trees, putting trees in similar to what we've done in other areas in the downtown. May include some rates and tree guards, like what you've seen. We've also talked a little bit about moving to just mulch beds. That's an ongoing discussion with the public works, just to see what's the best approach there from a long-term maintenance standpoint. With a solid irrigation, trying to help those trees survive in that environment. Mentioned the colored and textured concrete boulevard, again, just in those commercial areas. Also working with public utilities on incorporating some power provisions for some of the events that are held down on Holm Street. That street gets closed down frequently and there's vendors that require power and right now the system that's in place is a little wonky at best. So trying to take this opportunity to put something in that's a little bit more streamlined. I realize you can't see these. I fully understand. My point in putting them in here is, we'll have this PowerPoint up on the city website if you want to look at more details. These drawings sort of illustrate a little bit better what I just covered, but in a graphical format, I can make sure you follow. So on to the meat, project costs and financing. Hopefully everybody can see this. We're looking at a project as well, a little over $4.1 million. So the lion's share of that is in the street costs, about $1.5 million. We've got another half a million dollars in streetscapes, about a half million dollars in sidewalk, about $15,000 in the Lake Avenue alley. Stormwater, we've got about $650,000, about a quarter of a million dollars in sanitary sewer, another $100,000 in service laterals, and about $570,000 in water main, and $130,000 in water services giving us that total. So how do we pay for and finance that project cost? How would the assessments roll into this? Basically, the project costs are funded in a combination of city utility funds, which would be the stormwater utility, the sewer utility fund, the water utility fund, all of which we pay into on our utility bill. The general tax levy is going to end up picking up a portion of this, which municipal state aid funds. That's funding that we get back from the state, it's our portion of the gas tax that we all pay at the pump. We get a token amount of that back and we'll utilize that to help pay for some of those eligible street stormwater costs. And then there is a special assessment component to the project, where special assessments will pay for a portion of the project. So this is all done. We follow a policy that the city has adopted. We update that from time to time. There was an update here on that policy within the last year. I'll cover that in a minute. So as far as how do we split this out? Well, policy guides us on all of this. And one of the recent changes is that the city is now assuming 100% of the sanitary sewer main and water main replacement costs, where previously there was an assessable component to that on replacement projects. The utility funds are now paying 100% of those replacement costs. However, service laterals from those mains to the individual properties, those are still assessed at a rate of 100%. Street reconstruction is assessed at 50% of the standard cost. This includes alleys, which was also a change. So a standard street in a residential area is deemed to be a 36-foot wide, five-ton design between a surface. If we build something larger or heavier than that in those residential areas, the city picks up that remaining added cost. However, in a commercial area, the policy allows for assessment of that full width, 10-ton design, so a more robust street, that's assessed at a 45% in those commercial areas. Sidewalks, 25% is assessed to residential properties, 50% is assessed to commercial properties. We have a little bit of both in this project, by and large, commercial, but there's a small area of residential on Frazee Street, a couple blocks worth. The city pays 100% of the cost related to storm sewer, out of the storm sewer utility fund, and historically, we have paid 100% of the streetscaping elements that I've covered. So what that means is, in this table, that summarizes what I just went through. I'm not going to go through this line by line, let everybody look at it for a minute. Again, this will be up on the city's website. I think the important thing to take away is that, you know, with a $4.1 million project, about $1.2 million is being assessed, but the city is still picking up just shy of $3 million on the $4.1 million project. So the city's still picking up about 70% of the project, which is commonly a little bit of a misconception that if these things are heavily assessed, the assessments are certainly sizable, but the city is still picking up the vast majority of the project cost. So that assessable cost that I outlined, that gets allocated in accordance with the special assessment policy and past practices. We try to keep this fairly uniform project to project. Essentially, all those costs, those assessable costs in each of those categories are divided out by front footage or each to determine a rate. So to try to summarize that a little bit, this gets a little hairy to walk through, but if you're a regular rectangular interior lot, you're not a corner lot, your assessable footage is effectively the width of your lot, of what you have street. So look at the nominal width of the lot and that's the footage that you're going to pay. Corner lots are a little bit more complicated. If we were doing an improvement on both sides, if you're a corner lot, we're doing it on your front and on your side, you'd get assessed for your front, which is your smaller side, plus half the dimension of the longer side up to 150 feet, plus anything over 150 feet. So what that means is you can get about a 75-foot credit or reduction on that long side, since you're getting hit on both sides. Also, alleys get assessed. So if you're abiding an alley, you'd get assessed that dimension as well wherever you're abiding the alley. That does come into play in a couple of properties on this project, but you're only assessed for those sides that are getting improved. So sometimes you run into some irregular funky shaped lots. We do our best to try to assign a kind of an average or nominal width to that, but we want to build on a case-by-case basis. So service laterals, a little more straightforward. We take the service lateral cost by the number of laterals we're putting in and everybody gets assessed for each cost for that. So this is how that all shakes out. A street assessment for a residential property is going to be about $110 a foot. Street assessment for commercial, 150. Sidewalk for residential is $25 a foot. Commercial properties would be $50 a foot. For projecting sewer services to be about $4,700 each. Water services at $5,100 each. And then those that are abiding an alley, you're going to be looking at an additional $18 a foot for that front inch. So what that means, it's summarized down below for some typical assessments. A 50-foot residential lot is $16,500. A 75-foot residential is about $20,000. A 50-foot commercial is about $20,000. I want to double check. Yeah, no, that's correct. So going a little further with that, if you had a 100-foot commercial lot, you'd be looking at about $29,000, just shy of $30,000. So those are projected. Every property's a little bit different, so again, keep in mind, those are just typical projections that try to give everybody some idea of what the special assessments would look like. Going back, I mentioned that the policy has changed this past year, and I want to outline the new policy versus the old policy, to think it's important to understand that the changes made did drive down special assessments pretty considerably. You know, if you were a residential 50-foot lot, the old policy would have been, you know, around $22,500. Now you're down to about $16,500. On the 100-foot commercial lot, under the old policy, you'd be looking at almost $42,000 compared to $30,000. So depending on where you fall in this table, somewhere between a 20 and 30% reduction was sort of the net effect of the changes in the policy. So. Assessment terms, conditions, what we would typically do is after we designed the project, we did it, we opened those bids, now we have firm numbers, because up till now, these are just our estimates. We get the bids, we know the actual cost of the project, we refine those numbers, and then we send out notices and have an assessment hearing prior to actually awarding the construction contract. Probably would hold that in April of this spring. Assuming the project goes ahead, those assessments would be levied against the developed benefiting properties on a property taxes in 2025. For these reconstruction projects, we typically do a 20-year term. You can prepay a portion or all of that assessment to either reduce or eliminate interest charges, just like any other loan. Project schedule, again, we're having our hearing tonight. If you designed this winter, bid it probably February, March, hold that hearing probably in April. We'll be in construction this summer, and we will have some final construction, look like a final lift of pavement in some areas within the spring of '25. Just a couple other quick comments. We'll have some individual property owner meetings as we need to, as we go through design. We've done that already with a couple of adjacent properties. There is a questionnaire on the back table for property owners to grab. That's just for us to collect some contact information, so we know how to get ahold of you. There's some other questions that are relevant to the design that would be really helpful. People can fill that out, get it back to us. But certainly, Paul, if you have other questions or specific needs, it's something we had. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, John. So with that, is there anyone in the audience that has either a question or would like to make a comment regarding the project? Don, if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Don Olson Lindahl, representing Washington Square Mall, 808 Washington Avenue, Suite 35, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota, 56501. So in previous, back in 2015, 16, when we had the Washington Avenue Reconstruction Project, there was a downtown parking, and it was called the Downtown Parking District Assessment. Now, and the benefit of that is that obviously the parking in the downtown is good for everybody in the downtown district. And so instead of just the large property owners or certain, you know, whatever, large or small, having to pay a big financial burden, it is split more evenly throughout the downtown. Now, I know I spoke with Kelsey just a little bit today and a little bit with John a little while ago as well, and just wondering if that is something that can be considered for this project, or if there is special conditions that that special downtown parking district needs to be used, or like, what's going to be?
John or Kelsey, you want to try to tackle that one?
I don't. That's not working. Sorry. I'll take a swing and Kelsey can correct me. To Don's comment, I looked back into this after Kelsey and Don visited. There's no, there was no parking district assessment used for the Washington Avenue project that was in '15, I think, that was Don mentioned. There was a parking district assessment used when we did the Veterans Memorial Parkway and the City Parking Lot Reconstruction Project, the Norvee's Parking Lot, that people refer to it as. That project had a heavy component of a downtown parking district assessment. So in other words, we looked at the costs attributed to creating parking spaces and then allocated that cost across businesses in the downtown parking district. And so everybody, sort of as Don mentioned, chipped in, because everybody benefits from parking in the downtown area, rather than those that are just adjacent to it. So that's true, and I think that's what you were calling, but on Washington Avenue, we did not do that.
Kelsey, you want to add anything? Are there further comments or questions? Laura?
Good evening. Laura McNeit, representing MMCC at 119 Greystone Plaza, Detroit Lakes, 56501. So thank you. We've already scheduled a meeting with John and some other city staff, so thank you for that. We do have some concerns as we own the Greystone property and it encompasses about 50% of this project. A couple comments and then I'll let Heather kind of ask a couple questions. One, I just want to ensure that we're able to work well with the city because our parking is all in that area as well. And I'm not, John stated that one street would be done at a time. That's great, so we're going to still have access. So that was one of our concerns. And the other one, talking about special consideration, 41 affordable housing units lie on that block. Is there any kind of special arrangements because of the affordable housing piece of this project? Just a question, and then I'll let Heather, let's all let Heather continue. Thank you.
Heather, can we get your last name for our minutes?
Sure can. Heather Hamlin. Same address as well as Laura's. Just some other concerns there as well are, of course, with MMCC owning a large portion of that block on Lake and Front Street. Just these special assessments there, that would be, you know, if that could be clarified on what those special assessments would be for that building, would be helpful to kind of know? Just because I'm kind of looking at that, I mean, we're looking at about 500 feet, if that's $30,000 per 100-foot commercial lot, I mean, earning $60,000. It's got a big chunk of change there, so just something to kind of think about. And then also, you know, those conversations that we've already had previously and those meetings that we already have set up with John, you know, just wanted to make sure the council is aware that we need to have those concerns.
Okay, thank you. So John, is that considered a corner lot then, or how does that shake out?
But to Heather and Laura's questions or comments, yes, we'll take into consideration access, and I don't really foresee any issue for them to be able to continue to utilize their parking lot. As far as special assessments, I think we haven't calculated the specials for each individual parcel yet. I think certainly in their case, because of the magnitude of assessment that they're looking at, we'll, we will do that, so that we can start that conversation, and perhaps that leads into some further discussion in terms of whether there's any mechanism or consideration for how to handle such a large assessment. So we'll do that, we'll go ahead.
So you're going to be in touch with them?
Maybe.
Okay. Anyone else that wants to make a comment? Okay, hearing no more. That public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion for ordering the preparation of plans and specs for the project.
Okay, Mayor, the Public Works Committee has reviewed this and give consideration the resolution, ordering the preparation of plans for specification for 2024 West Downtown Street Utility Improvement Project. Discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I think the rest of the folks that are in attendance here this evening are on the community agenda, Community Development Committee Agenda, A, B, and C, I believe. So Chairman, vote me.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moving down to item 5A, consideration to a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow planned unit development for a storage, self-storage facility and enclosed and outdoor storage, 1397 Winter Drive, which is Menards. There is an updated resolution that was handed out this morning. That was a numerical error yesterday, so we've got that corrected. If you look down to item 8, it's the proposed project will have 291 enclosed storage units and 82 parking spots, so that has been updated. This was discussed last night at CDC with unanimous approval, as well as the Planning Commission, so I move this forward.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve a conditional use permit for a PUD self-storage facility with enclosed and outdoor storage at 1597 Winter Drive, Menards. Discussion?
I just wanted to mention that there was some thought that some of these would be up for sale, but all of these are going to be renovated, correct?
Yes.
So these will be all renovated.
Further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add was a thank you to Menards. This was not their first site that they recommended to us, but we feel this is a much better site for the whole growth of that area, so thank you for reconsidering.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item 5B, consideration to a resolution approving a variance to allow a 20-foot rear yard setback instead of a 30-foot rear yard setback on a commercial lot at 535 Oak Street. This was discussed last night at CDC with full recommendation, as well as the Planning Commission, to move this forward as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution approving a variance to allow a 20-foot rear yard setback instead of a 30-foot rear yard setback on a commercial lot at 535 Oak Street.
This was discussed last night at CDC with full recommendation, as well as the Planning Commission, to move this forward as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution approving a variance to allow a 20-foot rear yard setback instead of a 30-foot setback at 535 Oak Street. Discussion?
The only comment I want to make on that is that we're going to put a large building in there, and it is, it is B3, but about 12 years ago, that was a residential. And I, I guess I don't like the idea that we're going to put in a steel building. We don't know what this building is going to be and for what purpose, and I guess I'd rather know what's going to go in there, and the neighbors would too, but I, that's the only thing I have against putting in a large building, and it basically has a lot of residential houses around it.
Further discussion? Motion is seconded on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5C, consideration to a resolution approving a variance to allow in addition with a 20-foot yard setback at 425 South Shore Drive. This was approved last night unanimously at CDC. At the Planning Commission, this originally came forward with a denial from city staff with looking at that and working with the owner. The city has changed its mind, and we're going with positive recommendation from planning and CDC. The reason there you have a new resolution in front of you is there was a grammatical error, I believe, on...
Item 12.
Item 12, thank you, that we removed a "not" in there. So this is now correct. This was approved last night at CDC, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve a variance to allow in addition with a 20-foot front yard setback at 425 South Shore Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We might as well keep doing that.
All right. Item 5D, consideration to a first reading of ordinance 519, amending the zoning ordinance to revise the Section 3 relative defenses. Mr. Remen, you want to take a swing at that one?
Essentially, this has been something that has been brought to the Planning Commission a number of times. The item is related to fences that are visually open looking, like the chain link fence, but there are fences that are more decorative for chain link that people would want it to have in their front yard, and they wanted to have it four feet high, because the people just would cover what they needed, and so the Planning Commission has recommended favorably to amend the ordinance. We've got a new resolution in front of you, or excuse me, new ordinance in front of you, and that's because the old one dropped out part of the language that should have kept in it, and so we amended it, and we have some new copy in front of you, and the ordinance includes that this may be located in any part of the lot except on a lot that includes a public body of water. No fences may be located within the shelter. So that's the way that it's added in.
Thank you. This was...
Do you want to change John's motion to CDC?
Yep, we both took this, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to give first reading to ordinance 519, amending the zoning ordinance to revise Section 3 relative defenses. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and first reading is given to ordinance 519.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5E, consideration for the first reading of ordinance 520, amending the zoning ordinance relative to the height of an accessory structure in residential districts. You have a new ordinance in front of you tonight for the first reading. This was discussed at Planning Commission, this was discussed at CDC. The reason there is a new ordinance in front of you compared to the packet is last night, it was discussed at CDC of raising not just one side wall, but both side walls to a maximum height of 12 feet. And if Mr. Remen or Mr. Clem want to chime in on that, please.
I should qualify. The Planning Commission actually did not want any side wall restrictions, but in our discussion, we all kind of agreed that, that we should have a side wall restriction, and the reason is that the ordinance written without a side wall restriction would allow for a 16-foot tall flat roof building, and that probably doesn't fit the character and structure of what we're looking for in residential neighborhoods. That's the primary reason that was added in by the CDC last night.
Steph, any link?
I think that John stated it very well.
So as discussed, we so move at CDC.
Motion's been made seconded to give first reading to ordinance 520, amending the zoning ordinance relative to the height of accessory structures in residential districts. Discussion?
The only thing that I look back on these, it helps having this 12-foot on at least two walls, is we're talking about a storage area, but we're also talking about bonus rooms now in these garages, and they can have a bathroom or whatever, but I, I'm just concerned that we're going to have, all of a sudden, everybody's going to have these bonus rooms, and that does get too high in some areas. I understand having these $200,000 garages, but those are entirely different type of things we're talking about. We're talking about current garages we have, and they're trying to make it to this bonus room, and I think we have to be careful in how we do that in neighborhoods and how settlements work out.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and first reading is given to ordinance 520. Anything further on the Community Development matter?
That's all, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll go to the Public Works Committee, Chairman Zima.
Okay, the first one is item 6A, consideration to a resolution accepting the revised preliminary engineering report for the 2024 rehab project and setting a public hearing for January 9th, 2024. I'm going to call on John Pratt to give us an update on that, what his recommendations are.
John, that mic's on, right? Yep, I think so, yep. In your packet was a copy of the preliminary engineering report for, we're following the 2024 street rehabilitation project. Again, just a little background on this, this stems from the project that we started last year. We had a report, the original report for this, that had a recommendation of various street rehabs to a number of streets across the community, and we sort of separated it into two groups primarily for a budgetary consideration standpoint. We moved ahead with part A of that last year, designed it, bid it. We got one bid, they were very high, rejected bids, and the plan from that point was to rebid that project this winter, more favorable time of the year, and also add those remaining street segments that were outlined in the original report, and bring that all together into one larger project. So that is what this report outlines. I would point out a couple of things of what we've added to this from the original report. We dropped some improvements that we originally recommended on the west end of West Willow and the east end of Long Lake Road. Felt like those could be deferred to some other time for various reasons. We did add Garnet Boulevard and West River Road into the project as a candidate for mill and overlay. Otherwise, the project stayed fairly static from its original report. After, you noticed in the P E R that we would be looking at about a $5.2 million project if we moved ahead with the, the entire gamut of streets. Staff met, we talked about this, looked at implications to the budget, tax levy, I'll let Kelsey kind of fill in some gaps on that, but if you recall, the budget that you're considering tonight included an increase to help go towards anticipated costs of this project, and if we moved ahead with the whole boat of these, there would be another pretty substantial increase to the levy next year. So in light of all that, the recommendation from staff and from Public Works was to delete, remove the Sherwood Drive component from the project for the time being. Felt like we could defer that one for a couple of years if needed, without any serious consequence, just based on the recommendation, we will hold that reclamation on it. So that's sort of the recommendation that's, that's being put forward, is to adopt the report, with the exception of not that we had with Summit, or I'm sorry, with Sherwood Drive. So questions on that? Kelsey wants to...
Thank you, John.
Okay, the purpose of having a consideration, a resolution accepting the revised preliminary report for the 2024 rehab project, and setting a public hearing for January 9th of 2024. Like John said, this will be without the Sherwood Drive project, and the committee recommends an ISO.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution accepting the revised preliminary engineering report for the 2024 street rehab project, and we'll also set a public hearing for our next council meeting on January 9th, 2024. Discussion?
I guess, Mayor, one point, and Mr. Pratt, you can educate me a little bit here, but seeing the Sherwood Drive is 1.4, and if we push it off and do a full-depth reclamation down the road, what is that going to, any idea ballpark what that would raise it to?
No, what we outlined in the report, or recommended in the report for Sherwood Drive is a full-depth reclamation already, rather than an overlay. So, you know, you've heard me talk in the past that timing is critical on the mill and overlay, a little less critical on the full-depth reclamation. At that point, you've gone too far, you're not going to overlay it and get an effective improvement on it. Waiting on Sherwood really comes down to, can we tolerate its condition for a couple more years? My estimation is yeah, there's some areas that are bad, it is going to continue to deteriorate. Can we live with it for a couple more years? I think so.
I apologize, and I was looking through here, it said FDR and be great. I thought it was some mill and overlay and FDR, I apologize, I'll be too.
Okay, further discussion?
I just have a comment on Sherwood Drive. It is in tough shaping spots, but like we discussed yesterday at the Public Works meeting was, we don't know exactly if there's going to be some other options to go with something different down there, and just we haven't had that conversation of, if we put, put new full-depth reclamation on the, on the top of this, it changes the whole aspect of what could be done in the future. If we want to do something different down there, it's probably better to get some input from the neighborhood than just patch it up and roll it go. So that's kind of what the thought process was there.
And right now, we have a number of street projects that really meet our demands, and we're trying to set aside some, because in this one, in this case, it's a million four hundred thousand, so we're trying to hold off on some of those and get as much speed as we can on these streets, but street projects are arguing to be cheaper, and so we're just trying to make the best, best bank of money on this.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, the next item is item B, where John's up there, with consideration to accepting the city engineer's report with this current project status, a couple days.
Mayor and councilors, Councilman Josephson indicated yesterday that Brown's closed, and so I don't have a lot to talk about, but I, there's really nothing to report on Campbell or Summit, Terry Street, all of those are waiting winter suspension. Talked about the rehab project. Whipple Springs, I think there's going to be, we have a resolution that you'll consider later in the meeting, setting a hearing for that project. We would, again, bid that project with the rehab project, just like we did last year. So a little more in the meeting to come on that, but we'll move that ahead next year. I haven't heard anything from the developed Southwood Shore Estates at this point, so a little bit of a mystery as to whether we'll be doing anything there or not. West Uptown, we already talked about, and we continue to work on the final design for the water tower, so.
Any questions for John on the engineer's report?
I'd like to be able to accept John's report on that.
Motion's been made seconded to accept the city engineer's monthly project status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And John, while we're at it, why don't you come up and tell us a little about Whipple Springs earlier? Have you had a little...
She just brought this microphone over to the table. Mayor and council alluded to moving Whipple Springs ahead. I want to be real clear, we're going to send out a notice for another hearing. The reason is not because anything has changed with the project at all, but by statute, the hearing that we had previously is expired. I think you have to award a construction contract within one year of having that hearing. By the time we get around to awarding that construction contract, the hearing will have expired, so we have to re-notice, have a hearing. We are going to put a memo or a note on that notice explaining to the residents why we're rehearing the project.
Okay, and like John said, we did a bidding for this before, when I had one bid, that's why we're going to go ahead and we're going to have a public hearing on January 9th on this, and the estimated cost of this project is $791,000. Committee recommends an ISO.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to, the motion to set the hearing.
Set the hearing, yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, then our last item is item received, a consideration request for Project 412 to install a sign on Long Bridge, and it says that, some of the TV here, it says Detroit Lakes on it, and the size of the letters are just going to be four feet tall and three foot wide, and it's going, Arts Committee is going to decide what's going to go upon it, haven't decided yet, and they're going to try to get that at some time in May and June, as soon as we have a nice, committee recommends an ISO.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve, we request from Project 412 to install a sign on Long Bridge. Discussion?
This is, this is just on one side of the bridge, correct?
Yeah, correct. Okay. The fun side. All in favor of the, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
This upset everybody in that shot base.
Anything else, Ron? We're not quite ready to go into the hearing in 601, so we'll just start in on the finance end until we get to that point.
All right, item 7A, Kelsey, you want to give us... Kelsey, you want to give us an overview of some of the policy changes?
Mayor and council, the Finance Committee kind of reviewed these more in depth. Quick summary would be, a lot of these are driven by statutory changes, so it's basically updating our personnel policy, making those statutory requirements. The big one is the earned sit-in safe time requirement that goes in effect at the first of the year, so that's included in these personnel policy updates in addition to several other updates. Any questions?
So item 7A is consideration to approving the personnel policy updates. Finance Committee reviewed this a couple meetings in a row and recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the personnel policy updates. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item 7B is consideration to approving the first reading of some licensing changes. Do we want to open up to city attorney to explain briefly the changes?
I like how you said the word briefly.
Well, if I didn't say it, the mayor would, because we've got 10 minutes.
Oh, well, I think I can do this in far under that.
Mayor and council, this city attorney's office made some recommendations as far as changing essentially what our enforcement mechanisms in the licensing, the licensing ordinance. This came about through an issue that arose about a month ago, and took a look at this, and we're asking the council to consider essentially giving us some additional civil enforcement mechanisms. Right now, a lot of the enforcement on permits and licenses comes about through misdemeanor criminal prosecution. We're trying to give us some other options, so we don't necessarily have to jump into that right away. So effectively, what we're asking is that these ordinance changes would be to have the applicant agree that if, by making the application for a permit or license, and this could apply to basically any of the permits or licenses that we do, not to a specific type. They're agreeing that they would be paying enforcement costs. A lot of the disincentive for the city to take civil enforcement action relates to the cost of doing that. And so by changing the ordinance so that the applicant agrees to pay those costs, that would eventually, first of all, give us more leverage to try to avoid any action altogether, and second of all, would give the city the opportunity, if it has to take civil action in the form of a lawsuit, to request that the court award a certain fees and costs for doing that. And so the changes essentially go down where 601 on two, the changes to the application process, whereby the applicant agrees to do that. Section 601, 10, and 11 and 12 are new. One of them allows for the administrative penalty ordinance to be used to try to enforce license and permit violations. We do that to some degree already, but it's not specifically authorized by the statute, so that's kind of a, or by the ordinance, but that's kind of a cleanup. And then 601, 11 basically allows the city to decline to issue a license or permit if the applicant doesn't agree to pay those enforcement costs. And section 601, 12 just outlines the various civil type of mechanisms that we can use. Injunctions are court orders to prevent people from doing something, mandatory injunctions are court orders to require somebody to do something. And so those are basically civil remedies that we want to instill into the ordinance so that we can use them as an option, I guess, to criminal prosecution. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Go ahead, Ben. So item 7B is consideration to approving the first reading of ordinance 5 of 18 Amendment City Code, Chapter 600, Section 601, Licensing Procedures. Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance 5 of 18 Amendment City Code, Chapter 600, Regarding Licensing Procedures. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And first reading is given to ordinance 5 of 18.
Item 7C is consideration to approving some fund transfers. Heidi, do you want to?
Sure. Mayor and council, this item is our annual fund transfers for the year end. Basically, what this is, is the council approving, transferring funds from the Stormwater Utility Fund into various debt service funds to pay for the stormwater share of various street and utility projects that we've had over the years that we're still paying off in the form of debt payments. And so these are all budgeted transfers. It's just that every transfer that is done has to be approved by the city council, and so this is the resolution that does that.
So this is consideration to a resolution approving the 2023 end-of-year fund transfers. Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving the 2023 end-of-year fund transfers. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And 7D is consideration to a resolution approving the 2024 fee schedule. Heidi, you want to?
Sure. So the 2024 fee schedule is in the packet. It was discussed during our budget meetings this summer in August, and nothing has really changed since then. It's really the same as what you had seen back then. There really aren't a whole lot of major changes from the previous year, just a few tweaks here and there. But yeah, in the packet is the resolution to approve next year's fees.
So the Finance Committee reviewed this, the whole council reviewed this back in August. Finance Committee reviewed it again, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 2024 fee schedule. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Keep on going? Yeah. All right. Item B is consideration to a resolution establishing the 2024 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. Heidi?
Yes, Mayor and council, this item is our annual resolution to establish the pay rates for our fire department. In years past, the last few years anyhow, we've paid the firefighters $15 per hour per call and $15 per meeting, up to a total of two meetings max per month. This year, it's a little bit different. The fire chief wanted to make some changes so that some of the folks that have stepped into leadership positions within the department are being paid a little bit more than the others who are in the department. And so this year, the rates are $20 per hour for assistant chiefs and training officer, $17.50 per hour for captains, and $15 per hour for other firefighters, and that is in effect for fire calls, so any calls that they respond to. Also, monthly meetings, and there's no longer the two-meeting-per-month cap, it's for all meetings that are attended, and then also for any state fire school or trainings that are attended on behalf of the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. There used to be some nominal annual amounts that were paid to those who were in those types of leadership positions within the department, but those have been discontinued now that we have this different fee structure in place. And so those were removed from this resolution that you would have seen in previous years. So I will stand for any questions.
Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approving the resolution establishing the 2024 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution establishing the 2024 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
All right, so item 601. Item F is consideration to approving a federal grant policy. I'll take a swing at this, and then I'll turn it over to you so you get a little bit of break before your next presentation.
I appreciate that.
So the federal grant policy resolution is basically bringing up some of the recommendations that the Audit Committee or Audit Team recommended last year, the last couple of years for how we handle our federal grant funding and so forth. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the federal grant policy. Discussion by the council? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. So why don't we just, there's nothing else in the finance except for the, I'll drink. Let's just wait just a few seconds here because we're at six o'clock and jump into the, I'm getting a tax levy, discussion. Okay, so I have 601, so at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting, and I'll call the order of public discussion on the 2024 budget and tax levy pursuant to the tiers and taxation requirements of the state. And with that, I would call on Heidi to introduce these next two resolutions.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, tonight is our discussion about the final budget and levy for next year, and so I guess we'll move right along. So first off, I kind of wanted to just go through the Minnesota property tax system and how that works and what that looks like. Basically, the assessors determine the valuation of properties as of January 1st for the following year's taxes. So your valuation as of January 1st, 2023 determines what, how your property is taxed for the year 2024. So your property is not taxed directly on your value, but rather on tax capacity, and that's calculated using different class rates. Those are something that's established through the legislature, and those class rates vary based on your type of property. So if you're a residential homestead property, you're at 1% of the first $500,000, then 1.25% of your valuation after that $500,000. If you're a commercial industrial property, your tax capacity is calculated at 1.5% of the first $150,000, then 2% of any valuation beyond that 150. Apartments, four or more units are at 1.25% of the valuation to determine that tax capacity. So as you can see, the different classes have different varying rates to determine what their tax capacity is, which ultimately is what is used to determine your tax bill. The local property tax process really is kind of a year-round process, and really, as I mentioned, begins with the assessors determining those property evaluations as of January 1st of any given year. Then valuation notices are sent to those property owners in March or April, at which time, right after that, a local board of appeal meeting is held. If you recall, we held ours back in April. That is the meeting where property owners can appeal their proposed property valuation either in person or in writing. So that's the appropriate time for folks to appeal. They think their valuation is completely off-base if it's wrong, they have reasons why they believe that that's not accurate, that's the time to do that. And then throughout the summertime, as you all are well aware, we have our budget meetings, which we hold, and that leads up to September where the council must adopt a preliminary budget and levy. And then that information gets sent to the county, who then prepares proposed property tax notices for the following year and sends those to property owners, including the dates and times of public meetings for each taxing jurisdiction. So our meeting this evening was on notices you all would have received on your proposed valuations back in November. So then today, tonight's the night, we hold the meeting for the public discussion on the final budget and levy, and then the council then considers and adopts a final budget and levy. That has to happen by the end of the month or December 30th, otherwise, if the council fails to adopt a new budget and levy, then the city defaults back to its levy from the previous year. Okay, so what do your property tax dollars pay for? So there's various different items on your tax bill, the main ones being the county, the city, the school district, and then special taxing districts. So kind of have a little chart here that shows just very high level what you're paying for from each of these different taxing districts. And then on the very bottom, you'll see sort of the breakdown of how much each of these districts makes up of your bills. You can see Becker County is approximately 32% of your overall property tax bill, and this is, I must say, on a residential property. Commercial properties also have a state tax component to them. City is about 38%, the school district is about 28%, and then those special taxing districts make up about 2% of your overall property tax bill. So this is a photo of an actual property tax statement for 2023 for a Detroit Lakes address. You'll see on the upper right-hand side, there's valuation and classification information. So if you don't know if your property is homestead or not, it will tell you right up there. This property is homestead. So there's an estimated market value, there's a homestead exclusion, that's the portion of that property's valuation that is excluded from being taxed, and then that brings you to the taxable market value. And that's the amount that is multiplied by those tax class rates to come up with the tax capacity. I probably lost you all by now, but if you can hold on just one millisecond longer, you can multiply that times our city's tax rate to come up with your Detroit Lakes property tax bill. So that line seven down there on your property tax statement, that is, that's how that amount is arrived at. I will say a slight caveat for the 2023 statements, the line seven of the Detroit Lakes does include the DLHRA levy percentage in there as well. That is supposed to be underlined, 10 special taxing districts, it will be reflected as such in future years, in 2024 and forward, but for 23, it was kind of a little blip that happened. You'll also see on here, you know, the other taxing districts broken out, so Becker County, the school district, the other special taxing districts, and that type of thing. If you have any special assessments, those are on the lower left-hand side of the page. It's a little bit cryptic because there are different assessment numbers and such that are down there, but if there's any assessment information, that breakdown is down in the lower left-hand corner, and then the summary of any special assessments is line 13 of your statement. So when we started the whole budget process for 2024 back in August, one of the first things we had the council do was rank what we believed, or what they believed was the top priority for this budget season, and this was the survey, the slide from the survey from our actual meeting. And so these were the priorities that the council had noted. So add economic development director position, add maintenance staff person, street repairs, and then keeping levy in check, funding some DLCC library repairs, park funding, add more police officers, and then other. This is probably a bit hard to read, but this is a summary of our entire property tax levy broken out into the different functions, so. So our overall proposed levy increase this year is 11.22%, as you all probably know. It's the same amount that we had proposed back in September at our preliminary levy. And so that $800,000, that sounds like a lot of money, but if we break it down into what those are actually going for, or what that money is actually going toward, about $100,000 of that is going toward the fire department. So it's, that department is a little bit misleading. So it's, that, that department is a little bit misleading because we're, the revenue side of the fire fund is one year behind in how we budget for that because it's based on the prior year, because that's how we build the townships. And so this year's budget included the first time of the full-time fire chief. So that impacted this budget quite a bit. Another $110,000 went into the equipment funds for just basically increasing costs of equipment. If you look around, if you've seen the costs of vehicles or any types of equipment, all of that has gone up quite significantly, and so we had to increase those funds as well. We had to add in another $100,000 for servicing our new debt at our public works facility that's being constructed. As alluded to earlier, we added in $200,000 for our new street rehab projects for 2024, knowing that we would have some significant projects that, you know, we can't, we can't amortize over 20 years. It's, it's a much shorter time period with those street rehab projects than it is with full reconstruction projects or brand-new streets. And then in the general fund, we've got about a $300,000 increase. Much of that is, is just normal kind of everyday things. So, you know, wages, equipment, supplies, things like that. So $123,000 increase is in the police department, $124,000 in streets, $71,000 in snow removal, $51,000 in parks, and then it's an election year next year, so we have $23,000 for elections. So that's just kind of a summary of some major changes. This is all that same information about the levy, but just in more of a graphic format if you're more of a visual person. And then these are major, major factors in the, in the budget. Again, this is kind of the same stuff that I just talked about, but those street rehab projects, we added in another $200,000 to the levy. We did bump up, again, that streets budget, trying to maintain our streets a little bit better, trying to get more life out of them. We did add a new full-time police officer position, which is being funded with one-time public safety aid that was, that is being distributed to us from the state. We did add a new economic development director position. It's being funded partially through the electric utility fund and then partially through levy increase to the economic development, or the development authority fund. Again, increasing the debt levy for that new public works facility that we've been planning for the last several years. Increasing again that capital equipment levy for all of our different departments, so streets, parks, police, IT, and admin. And then also settling, those settled contracts, so we had 4% wage increase, health insurance, increased costs, and that type of thing, all factored into this 2024 budget. So again, very hard to see this probably, but again, all of this is going to be on our website if you're very interested, but this is a summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures, so you can kind of see how all of that breaks down. So how do we compare to other cities? That's, that's kind of where we kind of always look, is how do we compare to everyone else or our peers? So the city of Detroit Lakes, obviously, we, we don't get a lot of LGA. We got a little bit back from the legislature changing the formula a bit, but still, if you look at us, we're the fourth one in on this graph, and the orange bars represent the certified levy for 2023. The blue bar represents how much comes from LGAs. You can see all of these other communities, except for Vexeter, receive pretty substantial amounts of LGA to help offset their levies, whereas we really don't receive a whole lot of LGA to help us offset our levy. This graph, I think, is, is pretty interesting because it shows a number of different things. So the blue line is our net tax capacity, so that is, again, how I mentioned earlier, how your, your valuation is, you know, broken down into tax capacity, and that's how we calculate your tax bills. And then the orange line is our property tax levy since 2011, and then the gray line is our tax rate. So you can see our, our property tax levy has been fairly, you know, just kind of creeping up just a little bit here and there in the last couple of years. It's, it's gone up a little bit more sharply, but the blue line is the one I think that's very interesting where, you know, back in 2011, 12, 13, our property valuations and things were, were kind of, you know, they were hanging in there, they weren't going up very significantly, but these last couple of years, that is a really sharp increase, and property values around here have just exploded. And so I, I know a lot of folks will talk about their taxes increasing a lot, but that, that's going to be a really major factor in, in what's going on there. So anytime our levy increases less than our net tax capacity, our tax rate is going to go down. So that's why you see that gray bar on a downward trend, because even though we're raising our levy, our tax capacity is going up so much that our tax rate still goes down. So this is our tax rate. The green bar, so these, this is how we compare to all of our neighboring communities. Now, this is 2023 data. I don't have everyone's 24 data because, like us, they're all just setting theirs right now. But the green bar is actually our DL 2024 estimated net tax capacity rate. So we're, we're projecting that our rate is going to go from 40.34% to 39.03%. And that's if we have a levy of 11.22% increase. So even with an increase in the levy of 11.22%, our tax rate is still going down because our property values overall are going up more than 14.5%. It's pretty bonkers if you look at it that way. So what does that mean for people's property taxes? Will your property taxes increase or not? That's kind of the bottom line, right? That's what people wonder. So looking at a residential, residential property, that's homestead, that is around $300,000. So that type of property would have some of their market value excluded, and so their taxable market value would be 289,800. So doing that calculation to find out their tax capacity gets you at 2,0898. So you take that, times our city tax rate of what it's projected to be for 2024, and you can come up with our, the city portion of this potential property's taxes for 2024, $1,131.03. Now, if this value was consistent for this property from '23 to '24, the taxes would decrease about $38.08. Now, is it, is it likely that people's values would have stayed the same from '2023 to '24? Probably not, but it's, this is just something to, to show you sort of, you know, from one year to another. So comparing your property taxes to other sort of household bills, you know, monthly internet, I don't know about you guys, but I pay about $55, $56 bucks a month for internet. Right now, gas is right around $3 bucks a gallon, so you can get about 31.5 gallons of gas for about what this property, in this example, would pay per month for their city portion of their property taxes. Cable TV or live streaming service is about $65 bucks a month, so not terribly far away from what you would pay per month for all of your city services. And then cell phone is about $60 bucks a month. So, excuse me, a couple of those bills, you know, adds up pretty quickly to about what you're paying for your city property taxes. On the commercial side, I've just taken an example for a $500,000 commercial property, done those calculations again, and come up with a valuation, or I'm sorry, a property tax amount for 2024 of about $3,610. Again, if that value was consistent from '23 to '24, it would be right around $121 decrease in taxes, just because our tax rate is going down. So for those that are worried about their taxes, if anyone has concerns about that, there are certain programs. Again, I talked about that homestead market value exclusion. Right now, that's for valuations up to $413,800, beginning with taxes payable 2025, that goes up a bit. So you can have a valuation of up to $517,200. That was just change in this year's legislation. Make sure you're checking out property tax refunds or a special property tax refund if your tax is increased over 12% and $100. There are special refunds for those instances. Excuse me, sorry, guys. There are programs for disabled veterans and blind and disabled households, and then also senior citizens. So if, if any of those sound interesting to you, talk to, certainly talk to your tax professional and/or contact the county auditor's office for more information on those programs. And then I'll have a copy of our complete 2024 budget with all of our funds on the city's website here shortly, and then I can also have hard copies available at our temporary city hall location at Field Police Department at 106 Holt Street East. And that is all I had.
Thank you, Heidi. So is one of the audience that has a question or wishes to make a comment about the 2024 budget and tax levy that's been proposed? Hearing done, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2024 budget and final 2023 tax levy.
Item six, or C1 is consideration to a resolution adopting the final 2024 budget and the final 2023 tax levy collectible in 2024. We've had several meetings over the summer. Plaid committee reviewed things again today. Reproves approved, and I so move.
Motion has been made seconded to adopt the resolution adopting the final 2024 budget and final 2023 tax levy collectible in 2024. Discussion by the council. This will require six votes or more, so I will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
If I'm hearing it correctly, that motion carries. We also need to adopt another resolution.
Man? Item six two, or C2, sorry, consideration to a resolution granting city council consent for final taxes payable 2024 HRA levy. Plaid committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution granting city council consent for final taxes payable for the 2024 HRA levy. Discussion? Again, six votes. If all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything further in the plaid? I've heard it. We'll go to the community. No, we're none of that. It's only that. Down to the liquor, public safety, I'm sorry. Chairman, Chairman President Wendy.
Item 8A for the public safety committee is consideration to approving the new fire department standing operating guidelines, and a copy of those are in the packet. I would hand it over to Kelsey to kind of give us a little bit of background on where we came from here. We've reviewed it a couple of times at our public safety committee meetings.
That's Mayor and Council. In your packet is all, I think, 124 pages of the SOGs. Basically, this replaces our existing department constitution with department standard operating guidelines. It's kind of broken up into two sections. There's the administrative section, which deals with basic qualifications to be a firefighter, and then gets into actual operational standards, which deal with how to respond to different emergency responses. Then we have a few appendixes with the job descriptions and a few other skill requirements. Again, this replaces the existing constitution, something we've been working on for quite a while.
So I would make a motion to approve the new fire department standing operating guidelines. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the new fire department standard operating guidelines. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Item 8B, do we want to take these separately?
We can take them all at once.
You're the boss.
We can take them all at once.
Okay, thank you. Items B, C, and D are consideration to approving the fire service contracts with Detroit Township, Erie Township, and Lakeview Township. All of the, the nature of the contracts are similar to one another, and I think we'd like to just kind of share with everyone the, a couple of changes that we've done this year.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, just a little bit of background. So our existing contracts with the townships expire at the end of this year. The townships have requested an update to the contracts, which was probably due. We had changed the language on them for quite a while, so the template that we used is a template that was put together both by the Minnesota Association of Townships and the leading Minnesota cities. So I'd say 95% of that is based on that template. The other thing we had a lot of discussion about is the actual contract amounts. Our old contracts were based upon a three-year average of fire calls plus tax valuation. They wanted to streamline the contracts to just a fixed percentage. The percentages that are in the contract are largely average, what they've been paying in the past. The city of Detroit Lakes has always paid around 60%. That will stay the same. And then the term of this is a three-year term. It's a little bit of a shorter term, so we can come back and reevaluate, just presented to us after three years. Again, the, the contracts are the same for all three. We've met with the townships a few times. I believe they are acting on the same contract at their meetings here in December.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve the fire service contracts with Detroit Township, excuse me, Erie Township and Lakeview Township.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the fire contracts with Detroit Erie and Lakeview Township. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Anything further, Wendy?
That is all.
People who are in the liquor handling control, Chairman Dalton.
Thank you, Your Honor. 9A, consideration to approving Faze retirement for Randy Burr. Randy's looking at retirement, and Kelsey, if you want to go ahead and expand on this?
Yeah. Mayor and Council, I'll take 9A and B at the same time. In your packet is a memo I drafted that we reviewed at our budget meetings. Basically, what we're looking at doing is Randy would go on Faze retirement, he would cut his time in half for 2024, and then we would be promoting Mitch Anderson, who's the current assistant liquor store manager to the liquor store manager. And now, that too would take place January 1. As I kind of conclude in the memo, you know, Randy's been with the city for over 10 years, and Mitch has been almost there just as long, about nine years. This is a nice transition to have Randy still stick around and help him for one more year, and then promote Mitch, and then we'd be looking to replace Mitch's position as assistant manager a few months from now.
And the liquor store committee unanimously agreed on these changes for line, 9A and 9B.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Faze retirement plan for liquor store manager Randy Burr, and to approve the hiring of Mitch Anderson as the liquor store manager. That would be a probationary.
Correct.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
9C is consideration of the sponsorship of the Polar Fest fireworks. We gave $500 in 2023, $2,000 in 2022, and then $500 in 2021, and we all agreed to give them $500 again this year.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded to make a $500 donation from the liquor fund for the Polar Fest fireworks. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's it, Your Honor.
That's it, Your Honor.
Mike, is there anything from Public Utilities in Houston? I'll give a couple there. I still am looking for an appointment to the Flyers. We have asked it towards, so if any of you council members feel so inclined, you can call me up and volunteer. I don't, I've got an ask out for the Planning Commission position. Idris Swenson wants to resign and not continue. And also, Larry told me today that Don Marston is going to retire as well. So we'll be looking for a couple of Planning Commission members, if you have anybody in mind. I'd like to recommend that Rhonda Foody be reappointed to the Detroit Country Club Board. I so moved. Second. Been made seconded to reappoint Rhonda Foody to another term on the Detroit Country Club Board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, we need to fill the position on the Detroit Country Club Board that Sam Ruffer held because he's completed the eligibility. And we have some candidates there, but if anybody's got a name, you can let me know as well. Also, I need to make a correction on the Detroit Mountain Recreation Board. I had erroneously appointed Jenna Walls, and I shouldn't have done that. So I want to recommend the name Christine Binstone to serve on the Detroit Mountain Recreation Board. Jenna Walls would not be on the board. I so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve Christine Binstone for the Detroit Mountain Recreation Board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything further from the city staff tonight?
The only thing I was just going to mention on our meeting dates, we are still planning to have our joint governance meeting on January 2 at 7:00 a.m. at the PD. So I know that's the day after New Year's, but we're going to stick to it.
At 7:00 a.m.
Is there some insinuation there or what?
No. Just a gentle reminder. Do you have anything for the agenda? And then that same day, get to see us twice because we also have our annual meeting that same day for our charter, because that's 5 o'clock.
You know, Jackie asked me what you do at the annual meeting, and I couldn't remember other than I think we appoint a vice mayor.
We're appointing a vice chair for a vice mayor.
Is that it?
That's it.
See for sure.
There you go.
You could probably do that at 7:00 a.m.
Okay. Couple of announcements. The elected leaders of institutions of Greater Minnesota Cities is coming up. You can let Carrie know if you're interested in attending. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day at the Capitol is March 20. Again, if you're interested, you can let Carrie know. Thursday, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be making a stop at Detroit Lakes at 2:30. And that's always a fun event, so come on out. Also, huge support to our food pantry. The 2024 Joint Governance Meeting Dates are listed, council meeting dates for next year, for the balance of the year and next year are listed. And that concludes things. I know Michael Octorling wanted to say a couple of words to the council. Michael?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So thanks for letting me speak at the end of your meeting today. I'm Michael Octorling, 226 Stone Creek Drive, apartment 413. So I have covered you guys for a little over three years now. And I hate to, you've probably heard already, but I took a job in Bismarck. And so this is my last city council meeting. And yeah, I'll be moving to Bismarck in January to become a state government reporter for the new North Dakota Monitor. It's a nonprofit news network affiliated with State's Newsroom in Minnesota. We have the Minnesota Reformer, South Dakota, South Dakota Searchlight, Iowa, Capital Dispatch, and now the North Dakota Monitor. It launched today. There's some new stories up on the website. It's all free, no paywall. Check them out. And so, yeah, I'm going to take everything I've learned here for three years covering this body and everything else in town and kind of translate that to covering state government, governor's office, and state agencies in North Dakota. So I'll be at the radio station through the rest of the month, and then I'll be leaving in January. But I wanted to say thank you to all of you, the council members, Mr. Mayor. And I especially wanted to say thank you to Larry and Todd and John and he left. Charlie and Heidi and Glory and Carrie and, and Kelsey and Chief Todd and Chief Hanson and former Chief Swanson. Because you guys made this city very easy to cover. And you guys want to tell a good story. You guys have a great thing going here. And I know you want to get the word out. You, you treat us media members very well here in this town. It's really appreciated. And yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I'll stop back. There's some [inaudible 00:08:59].
Thank you. The business of this council has come to a conclusion. Don't forget, we're going to take a picture afterwards.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.